All meetings are ordered. One P M. Okay, Madam Secretary, are you ready?
Yes. A roll call of the Board of Trustees. Howard Haggard.
Ready.
Diane Jordan.
Here.
Todd McDaniel.
Here.
Chad Sargent.
Here.
Brenda Walters is absent. There's a quorum.
Okay, recognition of yes, another full room. Everybody's signed in? Thank you, we appreciate that. Okay, item number four, public comment. Okay, so the first person we have is Eric with Freezing Nails.
Yes.
On agenda item number five nine for everybody, just so you know real quick.
Which I think Rhonda's gonna present for until now.
Excuse me?
I think Rhonda's gonna speak for until now.
Oh, okay, Rhonda, do you want to go first? Is that what you're saying?
I'll go for the whole group.
Oh, gotcha, okay, okay. So Rhonda's gonna talk for Eric, Paul, and herself. Right? One more?
Ashley.
Oh, okay. Yep, item number nine is the discussion and community engagement with representatives from the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Go for it, Rhonda, church.
All right, well, thank you all for having us here today. We know that the project going through Ho Chi Town is of primary concern to everyone here, and so in the interest of keeping the lines of communication open, we're looking for other ways to allow people from the community to talk one-on-one with officials from ODOT as well as folks on the engineering side. We know that the big public meetings that we've had in the past are not always the best venue for those one-on-one discussions. And so an idea that we are hoping to, what I'm presenting today, is what we're gonna call office hours. So, for example, two hours prior to your monthly town hall meetings like today, we would ask for small space, maybe in the library, to just sit at a table and anyone can come by at any point during those two hours preceding the town hall meeting and ask questions, talk to the designers, talk to folks from ODOT, let your concerns be heard. So. Yeah, we really want as much community input as possible. I can't always guarantee that we're gonna do what you want, but I can guarantee you that we will hear your comments throughout the whole process.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. Okay, hang on a second, we gotta follow our super, super rules here. Paul, I don't have you listed.
Yeah, I was gonna speak and I marked it up 'cause I heard the.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing I was gonna say, you'll also see us.
But you're not listed to speak now.
Oh, okay.
That's what I said. They give a penalty on the rules, I'm really sorry. So, but you can talk after the meeting, okay? Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Sure? Okay, Crystal, all right. We have Crystal Jocelyn on item number nine.
Okay, so on number nine, that's part of what our question was, is how will we be engaged? And because our community has had this outcry for times outside of the workday.
Yes.
Will you be doing that? Because two hours prior to these meetings, it's not necessarily convenient, see that we have a lot of them not here during that time? So will there be some of the evenings that we can?
We don't respond to comments on this.
Yeah, but will there be some times during after-hours where people can come and meet with you in those same office hours?
Okay.
Also have number 10 on there.
I didn't see 10.
It says 9, 10, 14, and 18, so it should be.
Get it back to me. You're gonna have to write one. I only have number, oh, that, sorry, my bad. Okay, are you done on nine?
Yes.
Okay, 10?
So 10, just, we would like a consideration, again, for these meetings to not be right in the middle of the day. You know, we know that that, y'all are all volunteers and you're business owners and those kinds of things, but we are business owners and work and things too, so if y'all could consider having those at a later time so people can try to get here, that would be great. The number 14, the committee that says discussion only, so there's not really an opportunity for us to ask more questions or to find out if y'all could address when now we're doing your discussion, how can we be part of those committees and give us a lot more information on that? And then number 18, you've got an executive session for hiring. Should number 18, is number 18 part of what the election is this afternoon? And if so, are y'all still discussing that before the election? Or are we confused?
You're confused.
Ah, we're confused, okay. So if y'all can clarify that when you get to that point, that would be greatly helpful. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Turn that back to our wonderful clerk, please. Okay, public comment. Consent docket. The following items are considered routine by the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with one motion, discussion desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent docket and considered separately. Approval of the October 25th, 2024 special meeting minutes, the October 17th, 2024 special meeting minutes, the October 2nd, 2024 regular meeting minutes, and the approval of payment of claims. Somebody look at your packets ahead of time, should be good. If they may not get it, all right. Hearing nothing, do we have a motion to accept the consent docket?
I make a motion to accept the consent docket.
We have a motion by Todd, do we have a second?
I'll say.
And a second by Chad, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters is absent, that motion carries.
Okay. Agenda item number six, discussion, consideration and possible action approval rejection. Oh, we don't need that. We didn't have anything removed from the consent docket. Number seven, treasurer's report. Mr. Charles, welcome home.
Thank you very much. I did want to take just a minute to thank everyone at this table, and Adam, Carissa, and the rest of staff for just their love and comfort that they've shown me and my family after my father's passing. Thank you very much, it is very much appreciated, and I love my Ho Chi Town town. Thanks for that.
We all love our family, this is always our.
That's right, that's right. I had the profit loss, hopefully you have it in front of you. We had a few avenue deposits of $4,500 through the end of October. Stripe deposits is up to $126,990, it's some change. We did have some Ho Chi Town direct deposits of $129,848.38. Those are all lodging taxes, okay? So the total lodging taxes we had was $261,338.93, so that was up 150.95% from last year. We have, of course, the sales tax, cigarette tax, use tax, sales tax. It's up 47% from last year.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, and down a little bit on cigarette and use tax, 29% and 41% respectively. So total income from last year, this time, 77.9%. And it was $506,981.19, it's some change. And then with our expenses, you see that listed totaling $97,958.26, and you'll notice in particular the repair and maintenance of roads of $97,958.26. So thank you, Board of Trustees, for working on those roads, very much appreciated. So that's where you send net income of 23.29% from last year. And then, of course, on the balance sheet, you'll see our total assets, which we list, it's our bank account, up from this time last year, 508%, and at the end of this month, So well done, thank you.
Y'all just don't get excited about big numbers. We've got lots of one-off things happening, so it'll probably be a couple of years before we really see true being.
Absolutely.
But we're pleased that we have money, it helps us get our job done. Okay.
Anybody have any questions about those?
Thank you for getting that, yeah.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Do we have a second?
No.
I'll say.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters is absent, that motion carries.
Item number eight, discussion only of the monthly report from the county administrator. Did you do anything this month, Adam?
Yeah, I'd say we got a lot done this month. So for starters, we received 20 applications for the position of fire chief. We're currently reviewing with our hiring panel right now to narrow down the pool of applicants to our top five to start beginning our digital interviews to begin the screening process. As far as police goes, we've ran our interviews for our top 10 candidates. Again, we have 38 candidates in total. We now have a top four candidates that we are going to move forward with the process of interviewing in person here in Ho Chi Town. So this should occur through the remainder of November, and we're hopeful to have a recommendation for hiring the physician out by the end of this month. As far as road maintenance goes, we've conducted project site visits with our engineers to prepare documents for road maintenance recommendations for the following roads. Cost estimate for asphalt paving on Mako, cost estimate for asphalt paving on Ringling, Halibut Bay, and Chinook. Cost estimate for asphalt paving of Pinion, including some regular maintenance to the box culvert that's there, the little concrete box bridge that's in place behind the bank to install signage and rails as well, because it's a very dangerous section of road right there, super narrow. And we're also doing a cost estimate for asphalt paving of Camp Ranch, and we're identifying several different options for the board to consider once those are completed. I'll have a nice little presentation for you guys later on, and you guys can make your determination on our prioritization of our workload. As far as private easement acquisition goes, we've sent out easements in the mail to developers of the following subdivisions. Sunrise Ridge, Canada B Trails, I said it all the time, I can say it all the time, but for some reason, I'm lucky for talking to you guys. Canada B Trails South, Canada B Trails Southwest, Canada B Trails Original, Pine Hills North, and then Sunrise Ridge East, and Timber Creek Trails South Phase 7. We've also had material that was dropped on Pinion due to a large number of complaints. Dust and drainage in that area is still an issue that needs to be resolved. We've had some good rain, so hopefully that's kind of helped settle some of those particles down. I do want to follow up that whenever it comes around to the prioritization of our workload for roads maintenance, whenever we have that meeting, hopefully we can have a meeting mid-November sometime and just really discuss roads. But I've noticed here that, you know, we're moving towards a VPD count, which is a vehicles-per-day count that exceeds the paving requirement or recommendations, so around 500 to 600, we have some engineers here, and they can probably attest to this, but around, once you start hitting about 500 to 600 VPD, you want to start looking at paving your surface, and we're well over, or I'm sorry, we're around 1,000 VPD, so we are currently busting our kind of gravel road traffic count. Moving forward from that, material and labor for Pinion was $20,000.775. Roads continued. Again, I've already kind of mentioned with you guys today that I'd like to host some sort of a special meeting in November to talk about our roads maintenance and prioritization, because I really want to get together, I want us to put our heads together and come up with a prioritization list of what we want to accomplish by the end of this fiscal year. What can we get done by June 30th, and what amount of money do we need to have allocated by that time? There's a certain number of tin horns I'd like to get replaced, because again, drainage all over this community still remains an issue at large. There's so many places where tin horns should have been installed but yet weren't, and we need to get those resolved as soon as possible, otherwise we're gonna be continuing to hemorrhage money in our road maintenance as our roads continue to get washed out. So I am working with Keith right now, and Keith is gonna whip up for me a cost estimate on a per tin horn installation basis, so that way we can take that and then we can scale it with how many, okay, do we want to do 20, 25, 50 tin horn installations by the end of this fiscal year? And we can go back and work that in with the prioritization of our roads maintenance operations, and we can just balance it out, right? So either way, moving forward on all ends for roads maintenance, great news is, is Ketto did approve the award of our grant application for the paving of Old Ho Chi Town Road for $125,000.
I'm gonna interject something here. Adam's been working on this a long time, and it's really difficult for us to sit in these meetings and not be able to say, oh, here's the things we're working on, because sometimes he's not at liberty because it hasn't been formalized. What if something happens? So finally, he gets to say.
You can make that announcement, yeah.
Ketto made it happen.
That's a great record, a great victory for us. Thank you, Diane. So $125,000, we're waiting, so what happens is, is Ketto approves the grant, and so they grade them all, we got ours, we won that side of things, and then it gets sent over to the State Department of Commerce, and the Department of Commerce will release the funds for that, so it goes to them for final approval, and they historically never rejected anything before in the past, but it does have to go to Commerce for final approval, and then they'll release the funds, and then we should anticipate an awarded funding late January, early February. So for everyone that's out there that's living off Old Ho Chi Town Road, or you're waiting for it to be repaved, you know, please, please wait, just hang in there, wait till February, and we're gonna be working on other roads, but don't think that we've forgotten about you, but it's really because we can't touch the project, because I did try to ask him, if we went in and just repaved it now, can we just get reimbursement later? And they said absolutely not, we can't start the project till afterwards, so just hang in there if you're on Old Ho Chi Town Road. Moving forward from that, so far to date, we've done $217,321.11 in road repairs, and again, we're still waiting on several more invoices to come through, so expect that number to continue to grow. And Keith shared, want to say thanks to him and his crews, they did come out and fix a public safety hazard out in Timber Ridge down in the southeastern corner of that development. I think it's, it's not, is it Dartar Bay? I think it's Drift, it's Drift Cast, it's right down there where we had some significant washout that was creating some tunneling.
Drift gas is in, oh, right.
Okay, well, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's Dartar then, it's in the southeastern corner of Timber Ridge. Anyways, we had some really poor washout that was going underneath the road, creating some tunneling. That road could have caved in at any time and seriously caused some damage to some people, and we've done that type of stuff as well, so that was really important. We're working on developing road design standards for the town. We pulled a few examples from a couple of different communities, we've meshed them together for what works in Ho Chi Town, and then we're having them finalized and reviewed by the engineers at this point in time. After that, it'll go to the roads committee, and then it'll go to the planning commission for review, and then it'll be sent to the Board of Trustees for the final approval before it's officially, quote, adopted. As far as short-term mental compliance goes, we actually had more than this, because this report was completed a week ago today, and so at this point in time, we had 123 STR licenses fulfilled within the month that we started with Granicus, right? And then we had over 215 tax payments through that new system. And then we also fixed from Avenue's mistakes 77 STR licenses, and this is all facilitated through Carissa, she's done an absolutely wonderful job. She came in and she fixed 77 licenses manually that weren't finalized or completed by Avenue previously, and so they kind of left us, left us hanging, and Carissa's been picking up the slack and really fixing that up for folks. And more are twinkling in, you know, every, every couple of weeks, so if you guys have any issues with your STR licensing or with any sort of tax payments, please contact Town Hall, and we'd love to help you out and try to make this process as easy as possible. Again, you guys have all experienced this, but this is for the town itself to know about. We've scheduled and conducted interviews with all three finalist firms now for the town's first comprehensive plan. We held a wastewater project updating, update meeting with Garber, we got the 30% plans from ODOT for the lane expansion project, and they're working to get the sewer infrastructure lined out with where exactly that's gonna be placed and conjoined with that project. We've also initiated with Liz's Hope, we've begun the meaning code development with Civic Plus, and basically what that is, is it's gonna make it so much easier for people to come in, access our website, use the meaning code system, search for ordinance, like, you know, a lot of, a lot of times it's really tough to find the ordinance that you're looking for, especially if you don't have it in a clickable format where you can just come in and click on little keywords if you're looking for. Instead, you know, what we, what most towns have is, you know, you're looking through PDFs, and it's really tough that, well, what section do I start with, et cetera? But this meaning code is a program that's gonna be embedded with our new website that will make finding our ordinances significantly easier to access for people, and it has a whole filing system behind it, and it's gonna be great and wonderful once that's fired up, and thank you, Liz, for helping us get started on that. Again, we're working with TSW, we're still working on finalizing our zoning regulations. Unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to have any zoning regs until we get a skeletonized comprehensive plan, while we're working on the larger-scale comprehensive plan. We need something that will just kind of be bare bones, meet the state requirements, get that passed, and then we'll be able to start protecting some of our neighbors here. We did have a couple of issues with our web designer that was working on our previous, on our, on our site project. We kind of had some creative issues, the website just wasn't really meeting our standards, and so I let that guy go, and then we've requested a new one, and this new guy has been absolutely wonderful, and he's been implementing everything that, everything that we've requested and dreamt up. We're working with Skip and Shelley and Diane to get old historical photos of like maps and, and the original Ho Chi Town and the current Ho Chi Town, and we're gonna integrate that into the design of our website to really like showcase some storytelling. And I'll use like the Choctaw Landing Resort Casino over there, I'll use their website as an example, is they did a really good job at integrating some of the local old-school like late 1800s, early 1900s maps into their website, so it just kind of like showcases our area, it tells kind of our story in the design of the webpage. So it's gonna be a really cool and fun experience, and we're trying to make something that, you know, people want to, they may not even be looking for anything, but they just want to go back and look at the cool Ho Chi Town website and just check out all the history and the design elements to it, so we're gonna have something to be proud of. Other than that, we've identified two key grants for walking and mountain biking trails in our community. The first one totaled up to $750,000, and the second one is $300,000, and I will tell you that the $750,000 one only has a 15% match requirement, which is incredibly low, because typically you're looking at about 20 to 25% match requirement. So because we have such a lower population, we actually are required to input less to get more money. So that's really wonderful, we're gonna have to put together, again, sidewalks or bike trails or trails master plan at some point, but it's a great opportunity for us moving forward and providing safe sidewalks and new and unique experiences for people, our guests and residents to experience alike. So that's about it, I mean, if anyone has any questions, please hit me with it, I'll be here.
Thank you, Adam. All right. Item eight, number nine, okay, that's a discussion and community engagement with representatives from the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, ODOTs. I'm looking at you, Liz, because we've got discussion and community engagement, are we just having a discussion here? Which pretty much Rhonda pretty much shared with us, that we will be having discussions with ODOT, and there are subcontractors working on getting this road through Ho Chi Town. Does anybody else have any more discussion about that? Rhonda did a great job teaming it up, Adam?
Yeah, I was asked to word that item in a way to allow ODOT to be able to respond it, ask for an opportunity to engage with people, and so that's why, how I landed up on there like that.
Yes. So are you good with that?
Yeah, so that's so that ODOT can answer questions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's so that it's not like the open end of like we did at the beginning, so there's questions, that permits them to do that under that, just Diane.
Okay.
Thanks.
So Ashley, do you have anything? I mean, I think we're just kind of letting people know we're gonna be doing this.
Yeah.
I think Chris has got a question.
Yeah. Yeah, I posed a question at the beginning that they couldn't answer because it was public comment.
For the same time, yes.
Now's the time to that, could y'all answer that question, please?
Okay, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you.
We are currently putting together a community engagement plan, and that will include a menu of options for us to engage with the community. If you have ideas on how, like times, places, format, just let us know.
Can you give us the information, like just tell us the information, how do we get ahold of you to talk to you about that?
Okay, you can give me a call anytime, my number's 405-517-5670, or you can email me at ronda.fair@odot-ok.gov.
Okay.
Yes, it's like State Fair. But yeah, we are looking at lots of different ways to engage the community, including doing things that are not within business hours like the office hours will be, because we realize that a lot of folks are, you have nine-to-five jobs, or eight-to-five jobs, you're not gonna be able to take off on your lunch hour necessarily and come to office hours, but we're definitely looking at ways to make it easy for you. My goal is that at the end of this project, you're gonna be sick of us engaging you and wanting to talk. We wanna, we wanna care, everything.
So community engagement is a great thing, and we'll be doing that, but you'll also see us, we're gonna set up meetings, the design forum nationally, and we're gonna come try to meet with businesses, maybe we'll be here two or three days at a time to meet with you any time of the day or in the evening, whatever's convenient, so you're gonna see that, and we're gonna be talking about access, and we're gonna be talking about things that are important to your business, what kind of trucks come in, what kind of route they take, or any of those things that might be pertinent to design that we can help out with, so you'll see us doing that as well.
Yeah, it's gonna, we're gonna really focus on getting out to any business that's gonna be effective. Each business has very unique concerns regarding ingress egress, access to the highway, so having those one-on-one discussions with the business owners is gonna be really, really, really important. We don't want to design a road project that's gonna cut off access to businesses or have a detrimental effect on businesses, so we really want to be partners in this so that we can come up with the best project possible.
Great.
Good, good, good. Todd, you good? Okay, we're gonna be talking about roads for the next two years, so get ready.
The rest of them might.
All right. Item number 10, discussion, consideration, and possible action approval rejection amendment and/or postponement regarding the town of Ho Chi Town's 2025 regular scheduled meeting date, so.
Like we did last year, Helen and I visited about this, when there are holidays, we had bumped it from the first Wednesday to make sure that we don't run into holiday issues. This year, we didn't do that with, what was it, Labor Day, Helen?
Yeah.
And so we bumped that one to.
So Labor Day and January 1st.
July.
In July, okay, in July.
And then the reason those are on this agenda is we've got to get those turned into the county next month, so I'd like to have a little bit of lead time on it, so.
Okay.
And we can all, if something happens, we can always cancel meetings, have a special meeting, but the, these are our planned regular meetings for 2025.
When's our deadline, December 15th?
Something like that, yeah.
Something like that, to the, okay. All right, so anyway, this will be the schedule, it will be on the website, so that.
Yeah, as you know, everybody.
As soon as we get it all done, you know, everybody's gotta look standard. Okay, so the schedule for 2025 meetings, any more discussion?
Are we gonna leave at one o'clock?
That's what we have on here. We're never gonna find the time that works for everybody.
I agree. Commissioners have theirs at eight in the morning.
It says nine, yeah, that's what's said. One works for this group of trustees. You get new trustees, you can look for a new date, new, new time.
Make a motion to accept it.
We have a motion by Howard, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Todd, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters is absent, that motion carries.
We worked really hard to make our information transparent and available to everybody. Okay. Item number 11, discussion, consideration, and possible action approval rejection amendment and/or postponement to select a firm and approve, uh, select a firm and approve a proposal to provide comprehensive planning. a firm and approve a proposal to provide comprehensive planning services for the following firms. TSW Planning, Path, and Olson Studio. Can we have discussion?
I just don't think we're, or I'm not ready to pick one, to be fair to the other ones that kind of came in later. I don't know how you guys feel.
And I agree, we, we, you know, we just had, we had a meeting Monday, a week ago Monday, we had one Monday, we had one yesterday. We asked people Monday and Tuesday if they would send us a, just a letter, of a, of a reference that we can contact. I think we've already got one of those back, but we haven't had a chance to look at them yet or to make any phone calls. So, and this is a very important thing, you know, this is, this is a big contact for us, for your project, so.
Should we, sir, integrate this?
I wouldn't, I would make a motion to take no action under this law.
One of the reasons I asked for this to get on the agenda is because we are our only meeting monthly. If we were ready, I wanted it to be on the agenda and find out, yesterday we were ready, but it wasn't on the agenda. We're not ready. We talked about already having a special meeting in November. Are we, and I'm going to look to Adam on this a little bit, do we think that we might be ready to try to set that date right now, or do you want to wait and let Adam and Chris kind of hold the board later? And I know we got Thanksgiving coming up, we got other stuff, what do you all think?
For the comp plan selection?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if we could get some, some more time to do those reference checks, have those discussions, and once I kind of communicate with the board, I think I can get a good sense of when will we can do a meeting. Yeah, and then maybe we could layer that in with our roads discussion as well.
Well, that's what I was hoping, can we, can we, go ahead and do a special meeting and pick up a couple of things? Okay, so should we just leave that for Adam to set up meeting day? You're good with that?
Okay, yeah, and then, hey, we might have a recommendation on police chief, too.
Yeah, okay. So we'll set a special meeting, we'll let Adam do that, and, I mean, it's just great that we got three great options.
Well, we had, all three of them were extremely impressive, and, I mean, every, every company covered town priorities that, you know, are at, at the top of the list of things you want to consider municipal, you know, services, housing, workforce, iron lease, public facilities, future growth, they all were impressive. And so it's going to be a tough decision. However, several had some standout qualities as far as branding and, and being able to, to, you know, form a identity of, of a new community. So, yeah, I think that, you know, requesting the references, actual cities that they have completed projects in from start to finish was one of the, one of the recommendations that I asked them to provide. They show you what they've done, and like I said, all three of them were impressive, but to actually call these individuals in these cities, talk to them, how things went from start to finish, I think that'll be good for us to kind of get a, an idea of how pleased they were, each city, and, and all three have great, you know, great success stories, and so that'll be good. And to also brief who wasn't there as far as some of the board members, to, you know, because being in person and, and listening to them present is, it's different than just reading a, you know, a proposal, and it was tough.
And going to the towns and seeing what they've done has been pretty impressive, too.
Yes.
You know, to actually see their five lane downtowns that are walkable is pretty impressive.
And something in how they've branded a lot of cities and gave them identity, and so, yeah, it's been, it's been a great process, and this is like a business plan for a community.
Yeah.
It's, it's been a wonderful experience, and so, yeah, I think.
Okay, we're going to take no action on that? Good call, Helen.
So we have a motion to take no action, so we're going to...
We're going to do a roll call vote on take no action?
Well, he has a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to take no action.
We need a second.
I second.
Second by Todd. Have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters' absent, that motion carries.
Okay, so you guys hear back in two weeks, or whatever, two and a half. Okay, item number 12, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement accepting the resignation of Brenda Walters for the Planning Commission, because you can't do two things at once. Do we have any discussion on that item?
Nope.
Motion to accept the resignation of Brenda from Planning Commission?
I'll make a motion to accept Brenda's resignation from the Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a message, motion by Todd, do we have a second?
I'll second.
By Chad, roll call vote, please.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent. Brenda Walters' absent, that motion carries.
Okay, here we go. Discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding the appointment of a new member to fill the vacancy of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do we have a discussion on that? We're also going to talk about committees in item number 14. We're trying to get more community involvement, so we've got a lot of committees going on, a lot of people have kind of been helping us kind of on an ad hoc basis to get out on different items that they seem to have some expertise in. Do we need to put this out there and let people know, get them?
Yes.
Five or 10 business days, like we've done some of the others? We got a little one-page, a little form, what's your name, why do you want to volunteer? I think that's, y'all like that idea? Anybody else?
And then you can appoint somebody at your December meeting.
Yeah.
Get them to between now and then, or even your special meeting.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay, so Helen, would you make a note in our minutes, and Adam, that we want to put this out for the public information to request a volunteer to serve on planning and zoning? We'll put that little one-pager out there, and then we'll put a deadline on it after we look at it. Okay, so do we have a motion to postpone? I think that's, what do you all think?
I would say just take no action.
Take no action?
No.
Okay, we're going to take no action on filling the appointment, and then we're going to do some legwork ahead of time. That sounds good. Okay, do we have a motion to take no action?
I'll make a motion to take no action on filling the vacancy for Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Todd. Are you ready, Helen? Give her a second.
Yes, I am. Um, Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda's absent, that motion carries.
Okay, so we got a big action item there to add that. And we made, so, which brings us to 14, discussion only regarding our current committees, including the following. So we have a communication committee, I think it's a one-man show of, of, and we have our fees and penalties committee. I don't know that they ever met, we had a contractor that was set to help us with that, I don't know that that ever got off the ground. Part of that was, you know, you can't have fees and penalties if you don't have the ordinance for the activity. So we've got a lot of carts and horses in this, in this starting of Ho Chi Town.
And that's why that's been on standby, and we've got to get police or showed enforcement in place before we really have any teeth for fees and penalties, so we'll, that will be revived at some point, just not then.
So do we want to do a little work session on all of our committees? I mean, you've got them listed there, A through H. So we've got communication, fees and penalties, finance, ordinances, planning and zoning, roads, safety, and tax. Do we want to combine any of those? I mean, could we combine ordinances with fees and penalties? Is that a good idea? Is that a bad idea?
So I put these on here as discussion only so that you guys could just kind of have this discussion, and then we can prepare any formal documentation or resolutions or things we need to for December, based on what you guys might want to do with some of these committees, to the extent that we need to do away with any of them or combine like you're suggesting. So today's just for you guys to talk about how we feel about the committees going forward, and then I'll prepare things for your December meeting.
You know, I see safety kind of also being, again, we're getting so close with our fire and police involved. You know, so we may want to wait a month before we put that committee together, when we have a police chief and a fire chief, and let him kind of help lead that with our SERP team.
I would say leave things kind of status quo until we get those positions filled, and then, then it makes sense to kind of...
Yeah, should we take another look at this in December? Anybody else?
Yeah, because some of these committees we're just not active in simply because we're waiting on progress.
Yeah.
And I believe what we've had is like, I mean, again, before we didn't even have an admin to keep us straight on when we were having meetings, or when they were meeting, or, you know, any minutes of any meetings. But it was always just two board members and then maybe three community members to have a five-person committee. That might still be a good general design. We might want some committees to be bigger, some might need to be smaller. Typically, it was two board members and three community members.
Yeah, we're just looking at our activity and what, what we kind of foresee into '25, and how we can kind of get a projection of, you know, some of these, you know, committees, and if they're active and if they need to be, you know, inactive until we get to a place where they can be.
And we may need some ad hoc committees. You know, we got our standing committees and ad hoc committees, something we need just once or something. Okay, all right, so discussion only, have we done discussion committees? All right. Item number 15, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding establishing a Ho Chi Town Christmas Tree lighting event to be held annually and approving for such events. I caution calling it annually. I think we should maybe do one and see how it goes first, because where are we going to put people, and those locations may change. We are growing so fast, I, I see a lot of opportunity to work with some of our, our bigger organizations in the area that might have good locations as to how this might evolve into others. The Old Timers Association, they've agreed that they want to meet the first Saturday in October for an annual event. I think we can pretty much say that's an annual event because they've been doing it for 50 years now. So I think we should be having other events besides just a Christmas tree event. We could do other events also. Probably need a special events and parade committee. But, okay, Adam, you want to talk about, anybody else, real quick, are you going to let Adam talk about his Christmas tree?
I'm excited about the Christmas tree.
Yeah, so actually, how this kind of started off was I was approached by a lot of business owners and residents and visitors as well, asking, are you guys doing anything for Christmas this year? And my answer was no, we don't have anything on the books, but, you know, most communities have some sort of a Christmas tree lighting or some sort of a Christmas event where you can get everybody collected together in the town. And I've had a lot of local business owners reach out to me, bump into me, saying, we would love to support something along the terms of a Christmas tree lighting, some sort of a Christmas event here in Ho Chi Town. So we have a large number of people here in the community that want to get involved with something special like this. So I shared it with the board, and the board had asked me to go ahead and throw it onto the agenda, and let's, let's talk about it, let's, let's kind of hash it out a little bit. So really, as far as a Christmas tree lighting goes, I mean, you can go on the cheaper end and just get string lights with a pole for a couple hundred bucks, or you can blow it out, look official, and purchase a official fake Christmas tree that is assembled in pieces, so you can store it away somewhere reasonable. And you can put it together, and you can get anywhere from a 15 to a 30, 40-foot tall Christmas tree, and these range anywhere in the amount of $5,000 to $25,000. So really, it's up to you guys what you feel comfortable with spending. Again, we don't have to come up with a particular budget today, but if we come back and we can meet later on down the, down the road, once we've kind of established our, our Christmas committee, and we get a better picture of, and a better idea of what contributions people are willing to make, how they're willing to volunteer, how they want to become involved with this process, after we create the committee and we create the event itself, then we can have a better understanding of, of a budget. So I definitely don't expect any decisions to be made today with regards to purchasing a Christmas tree, but we, we have the information here available, and Chris is here, she's been doing a lot of research on Christmas trees as well, she's been calling some other communities, seeing what they do for their Christmas tree lighting. But I think that this is going to be a wonderful event for Ho Chi Town, and another reason why you can bring your family to our community.
I mean, I see, I see it being something beyond a, you know, just a, you know, a beautiful presentation of celebrating this time, you know, that time of the year, but it also could be something that could be, you know, showing appreciation for a lot of your employees that are in Ho Chi Town, that work in all the businesses from, from, you know, south to north, and so something where you not only bring the citizens out, but you also bring the individuals that are contributing to your city's prosperity. Those individuals, you know, are, they need to be considered, and I, I know a couple of cities that do that, you know, small cities, or, or small towns that, so I can follow up on that. But I think that's something to think about as we move forward. But, yeah, I mean, I would like to see it be something, you know, huge and, and a, you know, an annual event.
Absolutely. I think we could start small and just scale it as we, as we do, just settle on it.
So do y'all want to, I mean, looks like we're going to have to have a special meeting in November anyway, but of course, Christmas is almost here. So do we want to like, so an ad hoc committee together?
Chris, yeah, that all sounds great and good, but boy, we are pushing.
Yeah, we might have to, we might have to wait.
To go buy one, to get a committee, where are we going to put it?
At least put the committee together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm all in favor for it, but I'm just, I'm looking at the timing. We should have been talking about this three months ago.
But we're going to be banned by three months.
Absolutely, and Howard, I was, I was chatting with another community, Goldsby, my former community, and they have a, a fake Christmas tree display, I think it's about 20-foot tall, but they've retired because they use another tree now. And so we were talking back and forth, they may make us a smoking deal on it, but it's missing a topper, so we would need to, we would need to fabricate a topper, but we may be able to get a really good deal, because they were like, do you want to just have it? But, I mean, seriously, we, we'd have to make some sort of a transaction, but we can have further discussions.
Donate to a nonprofit, it can be donated to a nonprofit.
So, yeah, but again, that, that one would need a little bit of work, but it, it is a really neat tree, and it's, it's pretty cool, so. And just an idea there, I think that's an outlet that could, that could get us by an inch and save us a lot of money, and it would be a great presentation.
Those type of, those type of beer events, they're all over the country. I mean, they have them in neighborhoods, they have them in Dallas, Fort Worth, Oklahoma City, all over, anybody that's, I'm sure they had them in, you know, in various places in Oklahoma City and Yukon and things, so, yeah, I think it's something we need to do. I know they do them in a lot of tourist communities, so. Doesn't PNC TA provide money to the municipalities in the county for Christmas already for certain events? So maybe that's something we could, we could address with them, and maybe receive some.
I want to recognize Wendy, since she serves on that board, if you want to speak to that.
Just simply a cement grant, yes.
So you think that they would be in a position to be able to help us out maybe for something like this?
If you get one, and we've got a meeting coming up next, two weeks.
I'll fill it up today. I'll send you home with it.
Okay.
So all I ask at this time, in, in terms of any sort of action today, is that we create the committee, maybe appoint one person or make someone in charge of that committee, and, and we put that team together, and we get to work and start reaching out to people and see who wants to get involved, because I've, I've got a handful of folks already that are, are waiting, they really want to make this special.
We, we have a lot of owners and business owners that have some awesome experience in that, planning and zoning, vague, that stuff. Okay, so do we have a motion to establish a Ho Chi Town Christmas Tree lighting event?
I'll make a motion that we establish the Ho Chi Town Christmas Tree lighting event.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chad, roll call vote, please.
But before you move on, Adam had an ask.
Oh, you want to appoint somebody to?
A committee.
Somebody to volunteer to start the ad hoc committee?
Put me as a spearhead, I can, I can take charge, and I can recruit folks to, I would...
Well, between you and Chris, and she, I know she's already done a bunch of research on it, she probably got it, and so, she, she loves this kind of stuff anyway.
So staff is going to do it. Okay.
How you want to work there, but yeah.
What we did, what you said.
The committee and put Adam and Chris in charge of it.
Yeah, okay, roll call vote please.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda's absent, but motion carries.
Okay, how would that event be announced later? Agenda number item sixteen, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding opting out of the Town Meeting Act to allow the McCurton County Election Board to run future town Ho Chi Minh elections beginning May first, 2025. Do we have discussion? I have discussion.
Yeah, and let me give some input, yeah, from a people perspective before you guys jump in on this. So right now, under the Oklahoma Town Meeting Act, which means we run our own elections like we're going to do this afternoon after this, there is a statute that allows a town that's governed by the Oklahoma Town Meeting Act, which we are by virtue of the size of our population, to, for purposes of elections, to opt out and have the county run our elections. The couple of things that will impact is, right now, we were like, for example, at our election this afternoon, we're able to set that upon ten days' notice and some of the requirements. If we do the county, then this is out on county websites and things. We will be governed by the statutory elections that get set each year. And so we won't be as nimble as to be able to set things quickly, but we've passed a lot of our kind of quick emergency things, our taxes and the election we've got today. So I don't necessarily have any particular concerns about that. We'll just need to prepare a lot more in advance for anything that we do need to have passed by an election because you've got to have those resolutions to them, I think it's like sixty days before any election, that's the thing. So we're just going to have to do a little more planning for future things that need to be passed by election going forward. I put May first on here because when I was preparing all of this, I didn't read an email closely enough to see that we were trying to get this done for the April election. We can get this done for the April election if the board wants to. We have plenty of time. The general, if we get, if we elect to go with the county election deadlines, our general municipal election would be April first instead of, what is it, the third April that the annual meeting has to be on? So we would be April first in 2025. Candidate filing would be February third through fifth for the two positions that we'll have in April. And then our resolutions from the board are not due till January, so we would pass our ordinance today. We could make it effective upon publication if you guys want to do it for the upcoming trustee election. So you could just amend the ordinance to say effective upon publication. I'll get the ordinance over to the election board, I'll work with them to get the documentation they need before January seventeenth. So totally doable if we want to have this done before our next trustee election. If you'd rather get through one more season of elections and then we've got two years before we have another one, we can leave at May one. That's completely up to you guys and for your discussion, but legally, we have both options. We just need to say our effective date to give you time to get it done for April if we want to do that.
I love the seven to seven idea of people being able to vote and politicians running for offices. My other concern is, is it just for elections or is it anything we want to vote on? Like if we want to vote on any taxes, any new ordinances or something, are we limited?
Anything that the public would vote on would now all go through the county. So like our election this afternoon, if we had passed this six months ago, our trustee clerk election would have actually been on yesterday's election with everything else instead of us conducting our own. So we will, if we opt for this, we will no longer, and we can, you can opt out. Like if something happens in the future where like, never mind, we don't ever want to do that again, you can opt back into the Oklahoma Town Meeting Act. But yes, anything that goes to a vote of the people wants to pass this would go through the county election process.
Can we just opt in or does it have to go back to the vote? The people have to vote?
No, this we do by ordinance. It is not something that, that has to be voted by the people that they get to vote at a county. So it's not like the clerk treasurer thing this afternoon, this can be done by the board to opt for county elections. So item sixteen is frankly just the discussion and consideration and then item seventeen is actually passing the ordinance just FYI.
Do you see any, like, I mean, for the, I mean, you know, do we, wait one more year? Do you see anything that we would need to have an election on that we couldn't be nimble? Obviously, I remember the first one. I mean, the whole point was we had to get our lodging tax in, so sometimes we need to be nimble.
Yeah, that's why we left it alone that first year. The things that I think that needed to get done fast enough that we would have been waiting for like a year, I feel like we're kind of past. Obviously, we'll have some zoning related stuff, but that's such a long-term plan anyway, we'll know that coming. So I don't have any concerns legally other than just knowing what we're going to do so I can help get it done.
And correct me if I'm not wrong, correct me if I am wrong. Yeah, the annual elections are done in April.
Yes, April first.
In special elections or in September?
In 2025, there you, they set which dates you're allowed to do special elections, which there is, January is special election propositions only, February is also got special elections, April does.
Anything we want, no, January's propositions, can we like have a special election over anything that needs to be voted on in February and April?
Yes, yeah, for any of the dates that they put out, like, it's different, some years it's different than others, I don't know why, but they always put it out. They always put it out really early. I remember, I think it was last year that there was maybe, or maybe it was the year we did our election because it created an issue with, we had to wait longer to get on the ballot, which is why we ended up on the December ballot when Ho Chi Minh got incorporated because that year had some weird special election dates. So yeah, we, we can put issues out, the problem, not problem. The biggest consideration is you just got to get it passed on a meeting well in advance of that sixty days of us getting the resolution to the election board.
And I hold point of putting this on the agenda, and I'm the one to do, was, you know, the concerns and the planks and that I've had from citizens, we need more than one hour or two hours to vote. Let's do this the way the rest of the world does it, give them twelve hours to vote, you know. Gets in the paper, it's advertised, we got twelve hours to vote. We let the election board do it, we don't have to sit here with paper ballots and cardboard boxes like we're doing now.
That's what I brought today.
But that's what she brought today.
Yep. Yeah, no, I, I think we're at a good time in our growth as a town to make this decision, so it's just really up to you guys if you want to try to get it done for April or wait until after that. So y'all just tell me and we'll get it done.
What do y'all think?
I like the way she has it now, personally.
We never let having to do something quick stop us before.
Need it to be made. That means next April's election has to be done right here at the church, that's what that means.
However, if we do it earlier, then we're, you know, we're pressing the envelope for candidates.
Well, correct one thing I told you on the phone earlier, Chad, I thought candidate filing would have to be in December, it's not till February. So we do, we, that was my worry.
Well, that's not bad then.
Yeah, we can get it done and advertised. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to tell you that. Yeah, the candidate filing wouldn't have to be until February third to fifth.
Well, yeah, that's the case.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
What do you think? Good with doing it since then?
So for item number sixteen, we're just having this discussion, so should we just take no action on the discussion part?
Yeah, I would say take no action on sixteen. And then on seventeen.
We're going to amend it to seventeen on the date.
Yes.
Y'all good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to take no action on item number sixteen?
I'll make a motion, we take no action on item sixteen.
Thank you, Todd. Do we have a second by Chad? Okay, roll call vote please.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda's absent, the motion carries.
Okay, now we get down to it. Item number seventeen, I'll read it slow for everybody. Discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance number twelve and ordinance of the mayor and board of trustees of the town of Ho Chi Minh, Oklahoma, amending the code of ordinances Title I, Administration, Chapter Six, Elections for the Purpose of Declaring that the town of Ho Chi Minh shall no longer be governed by the Oklahoma Town Meeting Act, Providing that the town shall elect its officers and decide initiative and referendum questions through elections conducted by the county election board, Providing for severability, Providing for repealer, and establishing an effective date.
Go ahead and read it as it is.
Of May first, 2025.
And then I would just make sure whoever makes the motion to say, and establishing an effective date of publication of the ordinance.
Upon publication.
Mm-hmm. We just need to get that language in the motion so that I have the authority.
On publication of the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance.
Which will be published in the next fifteen days, so as soon as it's published, it'll be effective and I'll get to work.
In time for a special? Okay, so do y'all like what I just read? And then at the end, with an effective date of scratch May first, 2025, upon publication of the ordinance. Any more discussion on that?
So let's scratch that date and change to.
Okay, so do I have a motion as it is read with the change of upon publication of the ordinance for the amendment? We have a motion on the amendment, right?
Yes.
Okay, motion for the amendment.
Make a motion, we accept the ordinance with the change upon publication of the ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion for an amendment to change it with the upon publication of the ordinance. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
A second by Todd, may we have a roll call vote please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters is absent, the motion carries.
Okay, so now, do we have a motion to accept the amended?
Oh, you're good.
We're good?
You're good.
All right. Twelve to twelve, y'all. Now, so that's going to be at the church, right then, since that's where they hold theirs?
It'll be wherever the county election. No, you just go, like you went and voted yesterday, this would just have been on a ballot for the people who are.
Like if we're having something that the county doesn't have, you know, we're not voting for president, they're still going to be held wherever the county election board holds ours, which is Chapel of the Pines.
That's right.
Okay, good, good, good. Everybody will love that.
Yep.
Everybody happy? All right. For historical record, remember the reason we didn't do that in the beginning was because we would not have been able to enact our own taxes.
Yeah, we would have been waiting a while.
So, you know, if anybody thinks there were nefarious reasons why we didn't do it that way in the beginning, we were very strategic in the reason we chose the Town Meeting Act. So give us a little credit for that. Okay, item number eighteen, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement to enter into an executive session for the following purposes, pursuant to Title twenty-five of Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seven B one, to discuss the hiring of a deputy clerk treasurer, and pursuant to Title twenty-five of Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seven B one, to discuss the employment of administrative assistant to the town administrator.
I will make a legal comment on this. The deputy town clerk and treasurer position that was questioned about earlier, this position is being hired to, if Helen were to stay the elected clerk, there to be her assistant and the assistant to the treasurer.
That's what a deputy does.
Yes, they're the assistant, they're not the actual clerk or the actual treasurer. Now, if we change, if the election is successful today, then they'll be the assistant to whoever gets hired or could potentially be a candidate for the hired clerk or hired treasurer. So, but right now, this is drafted to be the assistant to the existing clerk. That's our recommendation.
Okay, so we have any discussion on that? Do we have a motion to enter into executive session?
I make a motion, we enter into executive session.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote please. Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters is absent, the motion carries and at two oh two PM.
Do we have a motion to reconvene in open session?
I make a motion, we reconvene in open session.
Do we have a second?
A second.
May we have a roll call vote please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters is absent, the motion carries and we reconvene at, I don't know, two thirty-seven.
Okay, the statement of the executive session minutes from the board of trustees is that pursuant to Title twenty-five of Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seven B one, to discuss the hiring of a deputy clerk treasurer, the board will be making an offer to Julia Ariada at twenty-three dollars an hour.
Subject to her background check.
Subject to her background check.
I'll make a vote.
Wait, I'm not making that. And pursuant to Title twenty-five Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seven B one, to discuss the employment of the administrative assistant to the town administrator, we will be taking no action on that item. Okay, discussion and consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement of any of the discussion from the executive session.
Somebody just needs to make the motion on it, please.
Make a motion, we often give you a job here to get twenty-three dollars an hour.
We have a motion.
Send it through the background check.
A second.
Second by Chad, roll call vote please.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters is absent, the motion carries.
Okay, item number twenty-two, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement to adopt approved holiday schedule for town employees. Howard did all the homework on that, on your tab. Basically, we like to do what our neighbors do. So typical holiday schedule, the remainder for this year are, you know, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, Martin Luther King, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, two days at Thanksgiving and two days at Christmas. Any more discussion on holiday schedule? Hearing that, we have a motion to accept a holiday schedule.
I like a motion to accept a holiday schedule.
Okay, we have a motion by Chad, we have a second?
Second.
Second, we have time, may we have a roll call vote please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Walters is absent, the motion carries.
We got official holidays. Item number twenty-three, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement to establish a minimum pay time law for full-time employees. Do we have a, do we have any discussion on that?
Well, I know we need to do it, but when we talk about it briefly in the executive session, are we ready to set that hourly rate? I don't think so. I'd like to take no action on this. I know we got, hopefully have another meeting in a couple of weeks, but have time to discuss it and put a better formal.
We're going to.
To approach it. I think we just got this though that is today.
Yeah.
We need to put something more formal together, in my opinion.
Do we have a motion by Howard to take no action?
Yes, I make a motion, take no action.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Roll call vote please.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters is absent, the motion carries.
Agenda item number twenty-four, new business any matter not known or which could not have been received per same prior since the time of the posting of the agenda.
Yes, I have some new bills.
All right, new business by now.
Real quick, we flooded town hall the other day after the rains. Middle door here with the balcony up top, even all these other rolled-up doors, there's leaks. I approached our landlord, she's willing to do whatever it takes, but she has no suggestions that do call her water. I'll take the, I'll take the initiative or we can give it to Adam. I would like to have the approval to go out here to hire, to get some people to look at it, to give us some recommendations of what needs to be done up here to fix the problem.
And then take those back to Bogota.
And then take that, take that back to Bogota to see if she's ready to pay that kind of money or bring it to us and see what we need to do. But we got to get something done in there. We're going to ruin all of our new furniture. Floorboards already been, ain't sorry, been on the floor. But we got to get something done in there, we're going to ruin all of our new furniture, floorboards, things, things already beating off the floor.
Is it leaking from up or down?
Yes, it's coming on out of that, it's.
Yes.
No, it's not leaking from.
So the discussion is, the discussion is.
Is it coming in from a door or is it coming in from?
It's coming in from the balcony, dripping off that spring off the other door, slashing out there five foot in the floor.
Oh, yeah, so it's.
Well, we've got to swap that middle garage door out conceptually with a door at some point, did you bring that up already?
And, and that's part of it, we talked about that since the day one we moved in here. To, and it looks like we're going to be here for a while. We need to figure out more than one way in and out, and I know roll-up doors can be an emergency exit. But, but, but to have something, a false front out here, leave a roll-up door, put a, put a three O door in it with a window on either side, some other way to come in, not come through here or to come through the library.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming, has this, has this happened over the course of?
It's been a year since we got here.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think just the age and wear and tear up there, I mean, there is no wear and tear, but the age, with no cover on that balcony up there, you've got exterior door that's getting pounded a lot. And you got wood rot up there, the door's rotting out, the seal's gone.
Bogota may have some recommendations on that.
I, I approached, I approached her, I approached her with it and she said, yes, I understand he may have a problem, but she said, she has, she has problems trying to get people to finish her construction over here. So she had no names to give me to contact to get them to look at it.
Well, I got some, I got some if we need it.
We do, so give them to me, we can, I've got a guy that's coming today that's going to be here for a while, that's going to look at it.
Oh, great.
And I've already had another person that's looked at it for no prices yet, but we'll figure that out.
Sounds good.
So do we have a motion for Howard to look at any repairs to town hall?
I make a motion, Howard, head up the repairs to town hall.
In conjunction with Bogota?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Hang on, let, are you, are you good?
Hello, it's a motion by Todd and Howard.
Okay.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters is absent, the motion carries.
Okay, we will, could you communicate? Yeah, so we're going to have a special meeting, where's our special meeting agenda?
We need a term of suspension and call it in order.
But guarantees are free, don't call it. Yeah, no, no, I'm not in call order, so, okay, new business, I'm just going to put this under new business to explain what we have, this special election coming up, just so people will know. So at three o'clock today, we will be convening a special election and we will be voting to, on two propositions, one for the town clerk and one for the town treasurer to become appointed versus elected positions. That's what the special election is about.
That means you can hire somebody versus.
Yes, and being appointed, they will be hired instead of asking our volunteers to, to put in so many hours as clerk treasurer. We put in a lot of hours, but we want to be able to appoint higher staff for these important jobs that are being done. So that's what, that's what our residents will be voting on at three o'clock. So anything else under new business? Okay, here in none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Todd to adjourn, you have a second? Hang on, you guys are too loud. We have a motion by Todd to adjourn, almost done, hold on. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chad, roll call vote please.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Todd, Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters is absent, the motion carries and the meeting adjourns at two forty-six.